All right, so we are ready to start the meeting. Any agenda reviews?
Uh, nothing to add or take off.
Okay. Bill of the four for the public, if anyone wants to speak, just ask for your name. All right, thank you. The approval of the very seven to twenty, twenty-three minutes. All right. Here, thank you. And I don't see a student here today. They're busy or something?
Much busy. He sent it to me, Chris.
We did, oh, we did the voting. Maybe too fast, sorry about that, everybody, so.
We have a motion.
It's our motion, Peter seconded, so all was in favor?
Aye.
Both, or, okay, thank you for that reminder. So, yeah, the speaker person.
Thank you, ma'am chair. First back from my long period of winter break, students had it. They did end the week. We haven't had winter time with you in a long time. I think maybe three years. They really enjoyed every day. And they just had a tremendous time. And first, congratulations to my assistant principal, who split in for me during the assembly and took the mic. And I guess did what you have to do. It was a good time I had by all. Very busy, the month of March is extremely busy this week alone. Tomorrow night is the One-X there Wednesday through Thursday. There are show, and their student director, too. I want to mention it. If you need tickets or whatever, give my office a call, and we'll take care of you on that. That's Wednesday, Thursday. We're really looking forward to this Friday. Well, that issue is on, we're having a semi-formal from six to eight in the gym. The proceeds benefit the Judy Plaza, they've got their fundraising now. I had the good fortune today, a little late, too good big. Our kids performed down to Conker Mary, our culinary arts program. They had a full presentation. There were about, I want to say about 12, 15 schools. Unbelievable. It's in the ballroom where we have the prom. And they set, they use the square up. And the kids are given a time limit where they have to present a three-course meal. And they're judged, obviously, on their attire, how they work together as a group. I mean, it's like watching a TV show, cooking show. And how the kids go at it. It's pretty intense. There's five kids, there was five kids on our team. Again, you're not using the grill, you're using all the propane, you're using the, that's a lot of things that we provide for our kids. I think they made me use grab cakes with the faris and the holiday sauce and, uh, pain risotto. And they got great reviews on their cheesecake, their homemade cheesecake. But it was fun to watch. I did not stay for the results of him. Do you know?
I haven't heard, no.
But Akun is too petty for all, which is the culinary arts program, for putting on the performance of that. We're also, I think tomorrow, I think the girls are up for the Division Two Nordic. The possibility we could have a third trophy coming to the school. You know, we, obviously, the wrestlers won a Division Three States and Boys outline. They did win their Division Two. So we're just waiting to see how Nordic turns out. And this class, we prepared a special meal for those students down the road. I think I'm looking at March 24th, I forgot my, I'll keep you informed. Cultural Arts is back, full year, high school. We're, we have the, I think we have six through 12 art that will be displayed here. That is from five to approximately six. And then from six to seven, the six through 12, the performances will be in the gym. It is open to the public. You'll see the, I keep everything pretty much on this floor. Cage from five will be in Plymouth Elementary. But the art teachers and music five, I'm very excited to have this back again. So if you do have any time for that, I think you'd be impressed with some of the pieces that these kids have done in both cage from fives and six through twelve. Date is the 16th. It's a Thursday night, stays off already, I mean. Before this year, we're joined, surprised it took us this long, but I try and encourage you to the National Technical Honors Society and the National Honors Society. Their new induction ceremony, they're going to work together and they're going to have one event to be at, I think. The main speaker that night will be Paul Ferenc, I'll make sure he speaks. And that'll be held in the lecture hall. Surprisingly, I want to say it's up there, there may be close to 45 or 50 kids being inducted into those two prestigious organizations. So that's on the 14th. Plymouth also had its first, the state two, we had girls wrestling. And we took a state champ in 126-pound category, and that was Haley Demers, which is a pretty big deal. They held that on the following week after the state championship at the MOC, they call it. And they have separate events for the females. And we had a state champ come out of there, Haley Demers, at 126. And finally, I think tomorrow, Will, it's Music Month, too. And he's taking a jazz song hall. They're doing a little performance down at the State House, where there's going to be a little presentation. And he's wearing a group of threes in high school. Other than that, we are back in full swing. Todd and Jan will start the scheduling process to make sure we're on line there. And obviously, we'll wait to see how their budget works out at the, at the voters' meet next week as we put our schedule together for the following year. Question, Phil?
On the last point, I was going to, I'm planning to get onto the performance. Is that the State House? Is it outside, is that?
I, that I don't know. I don't, I thought it was inside. They were playing inside the, in the house of ref chambers. That's what I, okay, it could be outside.
No, I, I thought that was what they all said. I think mine has come from Michelle, but I'm not.
It says the lawn.
The lawn, yeah, that's why.
Oh, yeah, it does say.
But the lawn is a grass lawn, because I just hear them, so, it doesn't impress you, it's.
That's what I was going to say, is there any? That won't be postponed or canceled?
No, I don't think so.
No. They're on the agenda for tomorrow at 1:30.
That's what I was saying. Peter?
Semi-formal, is that for all four classes?
That is for all four classes. Yes, it is, nine, 10, 11, 12. Very exciting night.
And did you say six to eight?
Yes, six days. About time to get, you know, over or not.
It's, they chose the time.
What's that?
They chose the time.
Really?
Also, the menu today is the prom down at Conker, but I can't hear of it yet. And they're, they want to eat earlier, too. They want the, again, a little more earlier, too. I get what they want. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate that. Committee?
Yes, the Teaching and Learning Committee met on February 22nd, and we approved the minutes of the prior meeting, which was September 21st. Uh, no. 2021. Agreed as a.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Discussion items, Assistant Principal Ecclestone brought new course proposals for us and distributed a list of new elective opportunities for next school year. No budgetary impact, but just offering more electives instead of study halls. Do you want to move with them, or would you like me to just rub through them?
It's up to you.
You can take action during the discussion items. You can just review what we did, and then we can take action during the discussion item part.
Okay. The courses were, is it Writer Artists, Writer Scientists, Brit Lit 1 and 2, and Exploratory French and Spanish, and Personal Finance.
Is that all you have listed?
There's no budgetary impact on those either, at all.
Yeah, I have the Writer Artists, Writer Scientists, British Literature 1 and 2, Exploratory French and Spanish.
And you should have unified the VAB, the unified.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
And then did you have 3D modeling?
Yep.
Can I give you a handout of reference?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just, they got lost in the list. Yep. So do you want, do you want me to continue and then we'll go back and vote? Is that what you were trying?
Sure.
Okay. Also, Mrs. Ecclestone reported that she'd been meeting with the five instructional coordinators every other day, working on curriculum design. Then they'll meet with the teachers during the late openings, where teachers are designing curriculum collaboratively, using their curriculum maps and scopes and sequence, which will help them develop units between disciplines to teach. There will also be three days of summer curriculum writing opportunities and two sessions for teachers that is being funded through a grant. And that was all that happened. So we need, um, we need a vote on the new course proposals? Do I hear a motion then to accept those new course proposals as previously stated?
Okay.
All right, all right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And, not here with the teaching and learning update, right? We don't need. I thought it was something else they was sent out to the board to vote on.
That was under the operations.
Yeah, that's what we have, okay. All right, that's all we have.
Thank you. Thank you. And school operations?
We met at 5:20 on February 22nd. We approved the, there was no change to the agenda, we approved the minutes. And we had two discussion items. The first one was the second reading of the Public Comment Policy, which we all have in our minutes and whatnot, and agendas. I'm going to wait until we get out of this committee meeting before we discuss that, because I think it's going to require a lot of discussion, and I want to have more briefing to do that. The second thing we did there was someone from the community requested that board members have name tags with their names, as opposed to no. And the towns they represent and asked the meeting dates to be better publicized than they are now. Those were the two things. I don't know how the second one is going. And then we had no non-public in the future. So I would suggest that we discuss the public comment policy in a more immediate committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, we have nameplates, I just, I got a question I remember.
I thought, I thought we had.
We have, we have.
I didn't even say that, I was like, we have.
Janice and I, we'll have one now. You want T-jackets, too? Peter from Canton.
With the mask on, each town.
You go far.
Okay, so we move on to discussion items. So, Public Comment Policy. So, do you want, so basically, I mean, if you weren't at the last meeting, we've been talking about this for a while, and I think the discussion was, it's not a required policy. And there is a little split between the committee as far as you move forward with the policy, or do you have a set of guidelines, the chair involved? What, what do you want to do with it? So, that was the, right?
Yeah, the question, as I recall, when I was drawn was, if we have it, do we have to use it? If we, if it's in place, does the chair have to follow it when there's one person in the audience? And, or when there's 75 people in the audience?
Yeah.
Want to say something? Um, I actually, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine, I'm sorry.
I don't really think we need a policy for it, but what I would like to see is that, I think you had mentioned it kind of the last time, is prior to the public speaking, is that the chairperson addresses a few things to, just to let people know what the process is on our end. Because I've said before that I think it gets lost. They don't feel like, you know, we're, we don't go back and forth with them because it's not a discussion. We're just listening to what they're saying. But I feel like they are looking for us to discuss it at that time, possibly. I just, I would just like, would like to see it be more clarified, you know, clear to them what is going to happen.
Up, Sam?
Bonnie raises a great point, and I think we talked about it a little last time. So I think there's two issues here. There's one, a philosophical issue first. Do you want to have a policy, formal policy? Or we don't want to have a formal, or don't we? The chair has a lot of discretion, and Christie has said that she would no longer like to be chair, so we're still going to have a new chair after the elections, right? So we're going to have to reconstitute, or have a chair. And I think whoever the chair is should probably have say in that discussion before they take the chair position, right? So we have nine out of 13 members here tonight, four aren't here. So the first issue is the philosophical, and the second is if the majority of the board decides that we do need some sort of policy, what does the policy look like? Right, so that's the second piece. And quite frankly, I don't think this policy is too, way too in-depth, even if we had a policy. So I think this needs a bigger discussion, both on the philosophical and on, if the answer is yes, then we should have some sort of policy. What does it look like? So I would suggest that this is, this would be a great topic for, like, the summer retreat. I think this is a summer retreat type of topic. We'll have our new board, and we'll be refreshed for coming out of it. That's kind of the time that we can talk about it with the upcoming school year, rather than at the, towards the end of the school year right now. So that would be my suggestion, that we punt to the summer retreat on this.
Phil?
I don't disagree with you, but I think that's fine. The only thing I would speak to is the fact that the board did vote in support, God, several months ago, that we did want a policy. So we already made that decision once, and that was approved. And then it's just been taking time to develop whatever it is that we came up with. I think we were sitting over in Mr. Spears' classroom when we voted on that. I'm pretty sure that occurred. So that question is answered. Despite that, it's probably not a bad idea to wait until, you know, the board, and, yeah.
Was that voted? I don't remember, and I missed some meetings, but I.
So I recall it as, it was sent to committee to look at policies. I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't recall, I could be wrong. That we were going to go with a policy, but I think that it was brought up to look at some policies, to see if we want to move forward with it. I mentioned, and it just VA one, and then we just delayed, so I think.
We didn't have one to act on, I think it was just the philosophical. Did we think it was a good idea to have one? At that time, for whatever reason, I could check through, but I don't know. Regardless, we're going to wait till summer.
Any other thoughts, questions?
Yep. Excuse me, I would like to put it off for the summer, too. At first, I wasn't in favor of that. I thought we needed to do this right after the new election and put this into place. But I think we could look at this during the summer retreat and put it into effect for the new year, academic year. And I'd like to look at a couple of other policies, if they are policies that some of the other districts. Do some of our sending districts use them at their?
We have, I think Wentworth's the only one that has something, right? It's, it's very much customized to their town.
Okay. Peter, maybe you recall, we not, it seems to me that if we were to, I mean, we did have the board chair just give a brief intro before we started the meeting, that we had people in the audience and say, you know, you're welcome to speak. That time we had an opportunity at the beginning and the end, which I'm going to vote with both. But just a little review to the people who were here and say, if you would like to speak, you have two places where you have the opportunity. You will be limited in time, and please identify yourself, just a little bit.
Is that, is that okay? Does it have the chair say, all right, we allow people, but there's so many people here, we're going to limit everybody to five minutes?
You have the flexibility to do whatever you'd like.
Then, then you don't need a policy of writing.
It's not a required policy.
Okay, right. And that's the philosophical issue.
And really, the, the Hampshire School Board's policy is so in-depth because of, it was a response to the outpouring during COVID, where a lot of boards struggled with managing some of that.
So I would like to move this to the summer.
Well, before we vote, I'd just like to say that I was on the way we could do that. And I'm perfectly fine with the chair having the latitude to say, all right, we're going to limit our comments to five minutes. I mean, that's, I'm fine with that, if that's, that's okay. I don't even need to see it, just be kicked out of the summer. I would go with that.
I would recommend as a board, you have some consensus on that piece? Like, as far as like two minutes or three minutes, and that can be discussed during the summer or two?
Yeah, I think, I think there's probably some differing opinions on which way we should go. So probably that feels, it's a philosophical issue. One, do we even want to have a formal policy? We don't, we just want to look into discretion. And then two, if we do, what does that formal policy look like? And a formal policy could just be a little checklist, too, as a reminder to the, to the chair. I mean, it could be some of these things you were talking about. Because part of it is continuity, right? So different positions run around, or new people come in and people step off, and new chairs come in, that type of thing. So it's the continuity aspect of it, too. And, you know, a little checklist with some tips would be helpful for something like that. But that one could be considered a policy. But this could all be discussed at the summer, I think, in the retreat, and see which way the board wants to go. Do you want to form a motion on that, or no?
I guess that consensus to move forward. Is everybody aligned with that? Right, so the new course proposal, we just did that.
Yeah.
Correct, okay. So CIP reviews, spring and summer. So I'm going to bring a topic up that we haven't talked about in a while, just because of our budget process. But we've been talking about a three-phase, those we've found the board for a while, this started prior to COVID. So we are looking at a redesign of HVAC, redoing some of the bathrooms for single stalls. It was originally three phases, which included, which we've done phase one already. Then we got all this ESER money, and it has to be related to a pandemic. So you've already given the approval for the three-phase project, but the money portion of it has gone up. So originally, we were going to pay for it all in one year, but now it's, it's with inflation, it's gone up. So we have completed phase one. We are now into phase two. So phase two, which we'd like to start April vacation with CCI, so you already have that contract in place. So product scope to remind everyone is all new ceiling, ductwork, and mechanical systems for the north wing. Two multi-stall restrooms converted to 12 individual private restrooms. And in the cafeteria, down where people come in from the football field, restrooms converted to six individual and private restrooms. So that is phase two that we'd like to move forward with. It was originally, the price was given to you at 1.8 million. It's gone up to 2.393,000. Includes a contingency, 4%. ESER 2 and 3, okay? Which we still have, but we do have to spend it, is 1,935,885. So I would like to use that money to complete it. And then with our savings in some of the special ed line, which we, which is a guarantee because it's directly related to placement, I'd like to ask for approval of 460,000 of local funds to complete that project. So that would start for April vacation and go through the summer. So I'm asking for the, you've already approved all ESER funds and the project. You'd have to approve tonight the 460,000 of local funds at this year's budget. Phase three, we might talk about at retreat, which was originally a redesign of the locker rooms, to upgrade the locker rooms down there. Where obviously, we thought we would have the ESER money to kind of move us through all three phases with the timelines. It's going to have to be all locally funded, so input it into your capital improvement plan with everything else. So it's something you may want to think about, if you want to do a modify renovation, what, you know, to do a complete renovation might be too much to ask for, but that's the next piece on the, on that anyways. We'll review your CPS.
Can I read this back to you, to sign on this?
Yep.
So the original project for phase two was to cost about 1.8 million?
Correct.
With inflation, et cetera, it's up to about 2.4 million. So we're roughly 600,000 higher than we were. The way we're going to make that up is we have 1.9 something million in the funds available.
Left in ESER 2 and 3.
Right, that's for 2 and 3, but we're going to use it all for 2.
Phase 2, this is, if phase 2 is your language.
Phase 2, we're going to use it all for phase 2. But then we need another 460,000 to complete phase 2.
Correct.
And the 460,000 you propose is savings from the special ed account that we're not going to have to spend. So it's, so we don't have to raise any new money.
Correct.
So it's kind of, what that means, though, is that we have no money for phase 3, the locker room. So we need, so we need to start the discussion of, do we do that? Do we do a modify? Where do we get the money?
You'd have to look at your whole CIP, whether it's end-of-year, you know, projects, but for next, that was, so CCI had told us, yes, we can do it over three years.
Right.
So we'll have to go back to the table for that.
So we can complete phase 2, though, not, not having to raise any new money?
Correct.
Okay.
So you know, we can, phase 3, we have the designs for it.
And that's all paid.
That would, that's all paid for. The original ballpark, I think, a couple of years ago, around 2.4 million for phase 3.
And what is it now?
Yeah, we have to ask.
We have, we've got to ask.
And also keep in mind, on phase 2, that's a complete overhaul of this building now, with HVAC. It includes the gym, includes the new system in the gym, it includes a new system in the band and chorus that'll now be air-conditioned, which is not now. It also includes the, all the heating and the ventilation down in the north wing, and it completes all our assets into single use also.
Except for the locker?
Except the locker, yes.
Okay, okay. So that, that this one could be completed starting this summer into next year?
April, we can, because we're just.
April would start it. So April, they would do?
Cafeteria boxes.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Clarification again for phase 3? We have the design, and that's paid for, or we figured the funds for them?
The design is paid for, the architect's money is paid for, but we, we don't have any money to decide.
It's going to have to all be raised.
And we don't know that cost yet?
No.
No? Okay. It's probably much different, the, the original cost we got prior to COVID.
So that 2.4 million originally for phase 3 was what date was that, 20?
So it was phase 2, oh, for phase 3.
For phase 3?
Yeah.
What, when you got the quote for, or the estimate for phase 3, when was that? In 2020, the 2.4?
We, we discussed that prior to COVID, so that was, I think it was.
Bring up.
2019? Possibly, yeah.
2020.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to be doing, we're going to do it in three years.
Yeah, so it's probably up there.
It's just taken them.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of barriers between. Okay. Any other discussion?
Any other discussion?
So this is, this is already approved? This is not something that needs our approval, or is it?
I need the approval for 460,000.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Okay. And all those in favor? All right. So other business?
Just the other business. I was going to ask if we could cancel the committees and have the first meeting at the beginning of April, April 4th, I believe it is, because it's a reorganization. Typically, don't start new folks in a committee. And then we can do committee assignments and the board.
So that was the 21st meeting? So we have that meeting? And then have April 4th be the first?
Be the first meeting after the budget season, after the reorganization.
So that was canceled the 21st, you said?
So I'd like to cancel the 21st committee meetings.
April 4th will be the first full board?
That'll be the deal, too, brother. Did you guys take a vote on the course of approval?
Yeah.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, Provo's over the floor again?
Yes, hi, Sarah Terrell. Haven't heard of you yet. I just wanted to give you some feedback on your public comment guidelines, policy, or whatever you're going to do at your retreat this summer. When you have the chair give these guidelines, one of the things that I think the public is most confused about is that this board reacts differently to public comments than a lot of other local boards, in that you listen to the statement, and that is it. And the person who made that statement has no idea what the end result is. They don't know if you discuss this later, or if you're going to discuss this at the next board meeting, or if you're discussing some private, which feels a little weird, but maybe that happens. But we don't know what happens after we just sort of throw it out as the ether. In other boards, sometimes they discuss it, um, not with the person, put them on their cell, themselves, or ask kind of questions, or occasionally ask a follow-up question of the person speaking. But that never happens at this board. It goes into you, and it's like a black hole, and you never know what happens. And so in your guidelines, setting that expectation of, we will discuss this again in public at the next full board meeting, or we're going to take this into private session, you're never going to hear from us again. Whatever your, whatever the expectation is, setting that expectation would, I think, alleviate a lot of the confusion and frustration that sometimes the public has when they come to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Going into, are there any other member concerns? Do you need that on public? Yes. So motion to. All in favor?
All right.